Mr. Mark.
Thank you.
You didn't even be able to see me.
I'm sorry. I drew a blank. I'm good at drawing ones. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. God, I pray that you open our eyes and give us wisdom and knowledge, dear heavenly Father. And Lord, everything that we do, may we do it earnestly, dear heavenly Father, as we do it as a community. Lord, I pray that you anoint, pray that you give knowledge and wisdom and understanding, dear heavenly Father. Pour it on each person that's here, dear heavenly Father. Bring unity. Bring clarity. Unite us together, dear God. And may everything that we do for you, it brings glory to your kingdom. And we ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Very nice.
Appreciate that. Mark's here on from Victory Assembly. Actually, I'm not trying to serve on the board of trustees.
The dude abides.
Actually, I am.
Huh?
Actually, I am.
You're what?
That priestess of the dude.
I think we're all pastors.
The dude abides is a...
What do you mean they didn't tell you about your new position?
So I'm a dude priestess.
Dude's priestess.
Like a bad band.
But one of the first items of business that we have this evening is one of the pleasures I have. It's very nice to bring. We have a proclamation, and tonight's proclamation is for National Vietnam War Veterans Day. If I could have VFW representatives come forward. And any other veterans that have served our country, if you'd please like to come forward and stand.
I'm not getting it yet.
Any other veterans? Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate all of your veterans. Come forward, please, if you wouldn't mind.
We'll get them both.
More than welcome. I'd like to tell you all how much I appreciate your service and thank you very much. And this proclamation for National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Whereas throughout our nation's history, servicemen and women of the United States Armed Forces have faithfully defended the principles of freedom and have worked for the advancement of human rights and democratic ideas in our state, nation, and around the world. And whereas members of the Armed Forces of the United States stationed in Southeast Asia during the Vietnam War served our nation under the most trying conditions. And whereas the residents of Bonner Springs have a tremendous amount of pride for our Vietnam veterans and military personnel for courageously representing our country. And whereas during the conflict, more than 300,000 soldiers were wounded, 75,000 disabled, and 58,000 killed, with thousands spending time in prison camps and some still missing in action. And whereas we can never forget the debt we owe these men and women who have loyally served our nation in battle and must never take for granted their contributions and sacrifices. And whereas the residents of Bonner Springs joined together to honor all Vietnam War veterans of America's Armed Forces. Therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim March 29, 2019, as Vietnam War Veterans Day and urge all citizens to honor those who courageously serve their country in the Vietnam War. Congratulations.
You know, I was doing some research the other day, and I found that, and I didn't bring the names with me, but there was one Bonner Springs resident who was killed in Vietnam, and it were three from Edwardsville. Yeah.
John Wilson, that's the one from...
John Wilson, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, we had some casualties from that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving along, we'll go right on to the second item, which are, which is the opportunity for citizens to voice their concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone that would like to stand and speak to the council about any items not on tonight's agenda, please stand, take the podium, state your name, and address, please.
Is that better? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Heidi Brenner. Is that okay? Is that working? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I live at 13930 Wood End Road, which is just east of the event center that opened up last summer. And I have just kind of a few things, concerns, to talk to you guys about. And you don't need to take notes. I have one of these for everybody at the end of the meeting, just, and I'm gonna try and read it, just because I think it will speed things up, because otherwise I could be here for about an hour. The event center opened last July. I think most of you are probably aware of that. And we really tried to be good neighbors and tried to help them. They had, I think, one event in July, and this should have been kind of a precursor in that. The first event they had, they had a shuttle bus that made multiple trips back and forth Wood End Road, when they assured us that the traffic would go out 142nd Street. Now, this is kind of my, excuse me, my chronological order. August 30th, there was no security guard posted, went to enforce the right turn only, signed exit on 142nd Street. A day later, August 31st, the outdoor PA system can be heard inside my home. Note that the owners assured everyone that all noise from the venue would be self-contained, and there's no security guard posted to have people exit. September 1st, all vehicles entered from Wood End. I observed six vehicles that exited west towards Wood End or towards 142nd Street at the end of the night. All the others exited east onto Wood End, which was a steady stream of traffic between 9:00 and 9:30. September 9th, and this is where it really starts. I mean, the music can be heard, when I'm in my home, the windows shut, the doors shut, I can hear the music and feel the bass, you know, the thumping of the bass that you feel, all evening, from the time the event starts till 11:00, 11:30 at night. And that's with my television on, the windows closed. September 29th, again, outdoor PA system can be heard in my home. And again, it was my understanding that all noise was to be contained within the venue. October 6th, music can be heard and the bass felt in my home all evening. October 13th, my daughter Emily was almost hit by a vehicle driven by, and we're assuming it was a white policeman, because he had long white sleeves and a black vest, drinking from a white solo cup, driving down the middle of Wood End Road in the evening. October 19th, again, music can be heard and the bass felt in my house all evening. I spoke with Mark Quann, who's one of the owners, who assured me that it was due to the windows on the venue being left open, and he would address the issue. Obviously, they did not address it. I sent a text to Mark with no response. October 20th, again, music heard and felt in my home. The owners need to understand that if they walk outside those doors of the venue and they can hear the music, then so can we. November 2nd, music again, all evening. November 6th, music and all evening. November 17th, music all evening. November 24th, steady stream of vehicles entered the venue from Wood End, including a full-size bus operated by Kincaid. The bus drove back and forth a number of times along Wood End during the event. Obviously, the bus company was not told to use 142nd Street. And again, music all night, heard in my house, same thing. And then there was, there's a kind of a hiatus between the end of November, which there were really no events, from November through just starting up again in the middle of March. So I kind of thought, well, maybe they'll have addressed these issues. But again, March 15th, music starts up again. This past Saturday, all of their windows and doors were open, because it was such a nice evening, from 6:30 till 11:00, 11:30 at night, I can hear the sound. And even at the beginning, 6:30 at night, I could hear their DJ saying, "Who's sitting at the grandparents' table?" I mean, folks, this is in my house, with the windows closed. And so that's kind of my chronological issue. Then other issues we've had, there've been beer cans thrown out of vehicles onto Wood End Road. Not once have I seen a security guard posted directing traffic towards Wood End or towards 142nd Street, as they promised during the meetings. And if you guys were here during the planning meetings or the council meetings, that was one of their big ticket items, was that they would have a security guard directing traffic. With the exception of a couple of times while the venue was being built, and one time after it opened, Mark Quann has not responded to any of my texts. And these are a couple of the texts I'll read, but I copied, and I've actually figured out how to do that. I'm pretty damn proud of myself. Let's see, September 29th, "Good morning. A few comments about last night's event. Did you know the music is not contained inside the venue?" Well, by that time, of course, he knew. But I was trying to be nice and tactful, said thumping of the bass could be heard all evening, such that my mom, my 90-year-old mom, who comes and stays with me on Saturday nights from mission, my mom wasn't able to open her bedroom window at 11:20 when she went to bed. I think there were more people outside the venue than inside, particularly in the parking lot, during the entire event. Nothing you can do about that, just wanted to let you know." Which, of course, we know, he should have had somebody on site saying to those people, "Look, if you're gonna be noisy, you need to come inside." Just want to let you know that the noise was not contained in the center. The big issue was traffic. We all know that none of the attendees or staff would follow your 142nd Street directions, and they aren't. But if you haven't paid the people who were supposed to send people out on 142nd Street, I wouldn't if I were you. They were all coming down Wood End. The biggest surprise was even the Z-trip bus was in and out off of Wood End all evening. I've already had a neighbor leave a message, Mickey, thank you very much, as to whether there was an event last night because of the traffic. Trying to be a good neighbor, thought you'd want to know. August 4th, me again, but didn't know. How is it that if you are telling people to use 142nd Street, that signs were posted on the corners of 32nd and Shite, and again at Shited Woodland and Wood End, that were directing people to the event? October 19th, "You guys are gonna have to get a handle on the music. I should not be able to hear and feel the bass in my house with the TV on and windows closed." November 17th, "I've really tried to be a good neighbor, but the fact I can hear that music, if you call all bass and thumping music," which I don't, "in my house is unacceptable. You guys said the noise would be all contained within the venue itself. I'm extremely disappointed." March 16th, "I would have thought and hoped," now this is just after they had the three or four months kind of off, "I would have thought and hoped you would have solved your noise issue over the winter, so I wouldn't have to listen to it in my home until at least 11:00 PM." We've really tried to be good neighbors. When it was being constructed, Mark came over and asked if he could get some bucks of water from my outside faucet, because they didn't have any water, and he said he would pay for it, and I said, "Sure, you know, that's no problem at all," and I wouldn't have let him pay for it. But the fact that once he asked for permission, got the water, never heard from again, but never came over and said thank you, never offered to pay, which, again, that's not the point. The point isn't paying, it's just the fact that, you know, he never even came over and said thank you, or said, "Hey, what do I owe you for the water?" Or, "Well, I don't drink," or "Can I make you some cookies?" I don't know. But, and a friend of mine even helped him on several occasions, used my big tractor, and helped him move dirt around and brush around, so that he, because he was trying to do it with a shovel, and he just came over and asked if he would help him, and he was like, "Sure." I mean, so we've even let him use our equipment. I mean, it's very apparent to all of us that Mark and his family promised a lot of things prior to the approval of their permits and have not followed throughout any of them, such as, no security guard has ever been posted at the exit to guide traffic entering or departing the venue, as was promised. One of the owners was supposed to be on-site during all events, and I'm sure you guys remember that, too. Either that has not happened, or if it, if one is on-site, there's been absolutely no effort on their part to enforce traffic and/or noise control. I mean, it's as though, as though there's nobody even there. All the noise was supposed to be self-contained within the venue, which was apparently not their intent from the very beginning. And lastly, we were assured that the peace and tranquility of our country living would be preserved once the venue opened last summer, and nothing could be further from the truth. We live on that street, and we love our homes, we love our neighbors, we love Bonner Springs. We don't want to live in Johnson County. We could all afford to move out and move to Johnson County tomorrow if we wanted to, but we don't. We like our acreage, we like our coming home from a hectic day during tax season, especially for me, and hearing the peace and tranquility of what we have. My neighbors and I would be grateful if the mayor and the city council would assist us in resolving these infractions. Trying to do it, the neighborly, has not worked. I mean, we really have tried to talk to them, we've sent them texts, we've tried to do everything we can to get along with them and help them. Because I still, I still believe it's better than having, what's his name, that wanted to put up 10,000 apartment buildings or something. But trying to do the neighborly way has not worked. And if the permit has to be pulled in order to get them to address these issues, then so be it. I don't know any, any way around it. Anyway, I'm sorry it took so long, but I do have copies for these, for you guys.
Please.
But if there's anything that we can do, or, I don't know if I don't mind being the contact person for all of our neighbors, because I know it's kind of tough having everybody come tracing it all the time, but I do not mind being the point person and to come back here in a couple of weeks to see. I'm happy to do that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'll take all that information, we'll pass that along. The first thing I'm gonna do is ask the city manager and the city clerk to review not only the complaint, but also the ordinances and how best this can be remediated, so I'll take that.
And the text messages are real, so that's kind of a lot of punctuation. I just didn't want to correct anything, in case they said, "Oh, this wasn't what they sent me."
Right.
Thank you very much.
And I'm gonna say, I'm sure, but that's why, I mean, if I were him, I wouldn't respond if that's not the reason, because then you're saying legally, yeah, obviously, so, not gonna understand why, why he wouldn't want to.
And your contact information is on here?
Right there.
Yep, thank you, Mrs. Brenner.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to stand, please?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, if I could make one, ask one thing of when we talked to Mr. Peterson about that. Could we also look at the special use permit and the specific things that were required of them?
Exactly.
See if there are violations that occurred.
Yep.
Thank you.
My name is Mickey Hilton, and I live at 13840 Wood End Road, neighbors society there. And I think when we discussed this problem going in, we appreciated all of you, except I think Chris wasn't here to come out and look at the site and everything. And I had talked to Mark one time, he stopped from visiting with me. But like Heidi says, I had stopped over there a couple of times, and one of the reasons I stopped was Dome, who is one of our neighbors, he works over there, and that's fine. But I stopped down there one day, and I talked to him, and I said, you know, I said, "You guys are throwing beer cans out on the street." And he said, "Well, how do you know it's the people?" And I said, "Well, because when we get up in the morning," I said, "all the neighbors are finding beer cans scattered along there." And I said, "What they're doing is coming out of there with beer, and they're drinking it and getting rid of the bottle before they get out on the highway, get stopped." And it wouldn't, like I say, it wouldn't just me. In fact, some of the other neighbors found, like the neighbor up on the hill, he, him and his wife was going down by the bridge one day, and he said there was beer bottles down there. And like I say, when we came up here, unlike Heidi, I think people appreciate that we didn't have apartments down there. But then I stopped down there, and I talked to Dome one day, and I said, "Hey, I thought you were supposed to have security going out on 142nd Street." And he said, "Well, no." He said, "I went to City Hall," and he said, "All they said I had to have was the right turn only." So somewhere along the line, they didn't get the message. And like I say, it, you know, when they started that down there, and you guys came out, and we pointed out, the blueprints originally showed that their entrance was gonna be right over the hill, if you remember, it was gonna, just shortly over there. And at least when we pointed that out to them, they had enough sense to go down the hill, because somebody popping over there, by now you'd had people killed or a tragic accident, they'd have shut it down, and then they'd have to put an entrance somewhere. So like I say, it's, we, it's a nice building and everything, but we knew they wouldn't follow the instructions that they told people, they'd say, "Well, we'll tell them, come down 142nd." And really and truthfully, you, it's an open road, so if their GPS system, you, the city or nobody can do anything about that. But it's just a fact that, like I say, with Heidi there putting up with that, but it's not to go down there and really raise a ruckus, but, you know, Sean and I was kidding one day, and we said, "Well, we're gonna rent the land across the street from them, from Cindy, we're gonna put a hog farm in." But, you know.
Oh, Mickey. You want to do it, too?
We got you thinking about it, and neither one of us knew much about hogs. So, but anyway, like I said, you know, when you guys sat up here, everybody was very nice, and Mark was when they was here, but like I say, that's basically all we're asking, is that they live up to their end of it. And we appreciate any and everything you guys could do to, like I say, there's no sense of having to hear that music. If you remember, a few years ago, Kobe's, I could, when they was playing, I could sit on Wood End, I could sit on my deck, and I could hear them. And so, you know, and I didn't appreciate the music, I didn't understand it. But anyway, if anything that you can do to help us, we would greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Heidi, is, are all these situations that are occurring, are they on like Friday and Saturday nights, are they during the week, or is it...
Saturday nights.
Okay.
But a few once in a while they have a weeknight thing, but it's kind of...
Okay, and it goes from approximately 6:00, 6:30 until 11:00, 11:30 at night?
11:30 and...
Okay.
I think 11 o'clock during the week and 11:30.
Have you had any situations during the week?
Um, one, I think there were, it was like a two or three day, it wasn't a wedding, it was like a conference or something.
Mm-hmm.
And then it was just, it came, but it's mostly Saturday night, that's the...
Okay.
Saturday night. And there's just been no, I mean, we're, and I know what they did, I mean, I'm sure they just took, I mean, you look at a Butler Building or one, you look at how thin those are, and even me, I don't know that much about it, but I'm thinking, how could they construct or expect something like that to have that much noise inside and not have it come out? It's not built to be, that's why it's a DJ.
We'll certainly, certainly have all those issues investigated. I know we don't have a specific noise level ordinance, but we do have a nuisance ordinance that might be something that we'll have to address. So, not keeping all that in the front of my mind, I'm gonna refer it to our city staff to take a look at that, and we'll be getting back to you.
Yeah, it should be a nuisance level, not a decile.
Very good.
Rather be a miracle.
Anyone else? Anything else that'd like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda? Very good. We'll go, move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes minutes of the March 11th meeting, claims for city operation, and claims for public housing authority. Anything to be pulled from the city staff? Residents? Questions concerning consent agenda? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. Moved and seconded. No questions or concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Mickey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Fairley?
Yes.
Thompson? Oh, he's not here, sorry. Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to regular meeting agenda item number one, the fire department pay scale. Staff?
This is a, looking for approval of a pay scale for the volunteer firefighters that be currently employed. Just really quickly, Fair Labor Standards Act, or FSLA, allows, requires public employers to actually pay at a minimum wage and overtime compensation to employees. However, there is a caveat to anybody that qualifies as a volunteer. One thing that we are working to address on that is, is the idea of having an hourly wage assigned to that. So what you see as part of the updated pay schedule, which is attached to that memo or scroll down, you have the 2015 pay schedule, and then the updated or proposed pay schedule, which includes adjustments on the base pay as well as any monthly stipends. So again, what we're looking to do is to adjust the rates with the removal of the hourly rate, and then ultimately to approve a pay scale for the volunteer firefighters as presented. And also, Chief Hubbell is here, should you have any specific questions about any of those operations?
Very good. Thank you. Is there anything to add from the citizens? Or against? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the pay scale for the volunteer firefighters as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here with you, Councilman Reeves, sir.
Nothing additional here?
None.
I'm just curious, what does a bass apprentice do?
They are the new cadets we bring on every year. And what they do is, we take them through the firefighter one, firefighter two schooling in that first year, and their requirement is to at least pass the KU certification for firefighter one in the year, plus learning the air packs like we were just talking about. They learn all the trucks, they, they have to get that certification to remain on the department, and then they go on into firefighter two for a KU certification. Every one of our firefighters that are still on the department, except for the new ones, are KU certified firefighter one, according to the NFA.
So how many of the current staff are paid versus volunteer?
They all get a beginning pay, even the cadets. They get the first hour pay, and then we were paying a hourly rate, which, according to FSLA, we have to stop doing. And so it's just like paid on call. They're getting like, I don't have it in front of me, like $4 to come to the call.
Everybody?
No, it steps up according to your rank and your certifications.
There would be the achievement add-ons.
Firefighter one, two, instructor, EMT.
I just got lost in this. So, so the volunteer, the true volunteers don't receive an hourly pay?
All of our volunteers receive.
Everybody receives an hourly pay?
Yeah.
So how does that take us out of the FSLA requirement, the exemption?
To stop paying that. We can pay a stipend or like a per-call pay.
Okay.
But we can't pay, like say, say you've got your $4, we can't pay $4, because everybody would get their first pay according to their achievement pay and rank, and then after that, everybody would get the same $4 an hour for however long we were there. That has to go away.
Got it. Thanks.
So now, the base pay has been increased a little bit, or the volunteer pay has been increased a little bit, but there won't be the hourly pay. So it's a net decrease.
Yeah. What we did is, we took the last three years of that hourly pay and just kind of averaged it out, how many calls and how many hours over that, because you got some calls, you know, we were on six or eight hours.
And some...
We, we just took and worked every hour's out and worked it out, and kind of took an average of what that would be across the board out of the budget, and then we bumped it up a little bit.
Okay.
Because most of our calls average, you know, 60 minutes or under, until we get on a big structure fire.
Really?
Or a big grass fire.
That's interesting.
A lot of grass fires, illegal burns, and things like that, we go on, you know, we're there probably totally an hour by the time we go, we get back, we clean up the equipment, and get everybody out of there, it's usually about an hour. Yesterday, I was talking about the car fire out in the, you know, they probably spent, probably about five hours on that yesterday, and then I should spend another two hours cleaning the truck up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sir?
I'm confused. Okay. The way it stands right now, you have a call. Okay, what is the base pay for that call?
It depends on your rank.
Okay, I get that. Okay, let's just go with...
So that's the first hour.
Right.
After that, we were paying $4 an hour to everybody.
Right.
The chief, to the... The chief, to the new cadet.
Right.
We get $4 an hour for being there.
Okay, what is it now? For that second?
That's what this is, it's $4 an hour, okay? This has, what we're asking is that that goes away and we increase it a little bit.
So the base pay per call has been increased to compensate for not having hourly pay?
Okay, but I'm trying to figure out if it's a two-hour call, what's that?
So they took, over the last three years, they averaged out how much time they spent on each call and they increased the base pay, which is a per-call pay.
Okay.
To that amount.
Okay.
So it's averaged out, so they're gonna get X amount and most of the calls are an hour, some of the calls are eight hours, but they're gonna get the same amount each call essentially, but over a year, it's gonna average out to be about the same.
So does everybody?
A little bit more.
Everyone that responds fall into one of these categories of chief, W chief, CPT, program manager, or base apprentice?
Well, and then in between though, there's just firefighter. You have your base apprentice and then your firefighter, each firefighter one, firefighter two.
So what's the base pay for firefighter one? That's what I'm not seeing in this chart, that's what I'm trying to find.
I think that's an add-on to whatever the base apprentice is and then firefighter one is a buck and a half more.
So the base apprentice is...
The base apprentice, then you add your firefighter one.
That's a base pay for anybody who shows up at the call.
Right, now, new, and then you get your firefighter one, you get the bomb.
The dollar and a half and then you get another, okay.
Got it.
Does that help, Roger?
And your firefighter two.
That's where I was...
Yeah, I'm sitting here, I'm trying to read this thing and I'm not coming up very good.
I got you, now I'm on board.
I just tried to average it out and I was gonna say, okay, this is what we're getting and taking eight hour, I wanna take the average and be fair, you know, to us citizens, you know, paying it and what we're given and we're not, you know, trying to make anybody rich, it's give them a little gas money, give them money to get back and forth.
Anything else? Seeing none, vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Brownie?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon? Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And before we start item number two, because of our workshop session, I'm going to have to beg everyone for a short recess and anyone else who needs it will start again in about three to five minutes. Excuse me just a moment. Hey Danny, math was never one of my strong suits. No, I'm thinking, oh, I get it now, your average, okay, I was thinking that was just the one hour and then I'm thinking...
Thank you for a very clear presentation and worrisome one. Yeah, I have to appreciate this attitude that you have, they too are good people and just...
They are, I think. Because they're taking advantage of all of us. And that's why we just want... Yeah.
She can pay 30 hours, she's the admin assistant.
We'll see, anyway, good night, thank you.
She takes her own paperwork building, she also helps with fire. And what she does during the day is she keeps me informed of what's going on. But without my phone, you know, we work back and forth. What do I have? Do I need...
Currently I locked the cat in the basement when I got done on the treadmill tonight. He gets done there voluntarily, hangs out on the couch while I'm doing my thing.
When I hired them, they gave me... That's great. And I have to clear up your corporate because I'll be sitting in the corporate room and they wanna know what's going on.
So once we get all these scope of services paid and get this design work done, when do we even break ground on this deal?
2022.
Before the road completely washes away. Is that, is that lift station number three, is that the one that we're addressing tonight? Isn't that the one at the ball fields? That's what I thought. I was trying to find it on the map and I couldn't quite get to the right maps to identify it.
About one feet high for us.
Did it show it on there?
No, I was just gonna say, you know, that one feet would come up probably.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you, I think, of course that was on the water lines themselves, if I remember right, I think you have.
Again, I apologize, very sorry, and we'll continue with regular meeting agenda item number two, broadleaf weed control, leaf control. Leaf control.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm just seen with the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight we have the broadleaf weed control for city properties. This includes the application of a pre-emergent and fertilizer, two applications of that and then the broadleaf application in late spring and also the grow wood prevention. There was one bid that came in for $17,995, which is under our expected budget.
Very good. Anything else? Citizens for or against? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid for broadleaf weed control to true green in the amount of $17,995.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
How are those bids done or how are they advertised?
We advertise them through the city website and then it's also posted in the Why Not Echo.
Okay.
Have we used true green before?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look into that.
Not important.
We have done broadleaf weed control over the entire city. We've done it in spots, parks had some places that were done, cemetery has done it some, but I think this is a more, yeah, more equitable. So thank you very much. Hopefully it'll work very well before our crop of dandelions springs out.
These need the dandelions.
Seeing nothing, nothing else, vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto agenda item number three, 138 Street Supplemental Design Agreement. Staff?
Good evening, Members of the Council, Frank Abart, Public Works Director. What we're looking for in this item is approval of a supplemental agreement to the current design agreement in the amount of $12,500. This is specifically to perform design work related to at least four waterline relocations associated with the 138th Street project. I would entertain any questions you might have. I'm not sure how much in the weeds you wanna get.
Might have to work with you.
Very good, thank you very much. Nothing else to add, anything from the citizens?
There's two of the darks.
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement to the design contract with Wilson and Company, Inc. in the amount of $12,500.
Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start back down here, sir.
Nothing additional here?
None.
It just shows the complexity of city business. Wow.
Sir?
I was curious about the, I was trying to figure out the plans, I can't pull them up now, Wi-Fi's not working for me particularly, but what are we doing with the streets near the houses there, the side street? I was asking one of the members earlier, is that gonna be part of the city putting that in, the additional street there?
The side street?
Yeah, when we change the grade.
I'm not sure which one you're referencing.
Yes.
138th is the primary project and, you know, that'll certainly involve some of the intersections with all of the side streets, some improvements of that to be made. There will be changes in the grade, you know.
Yeah, I was...
But as far as doing a whole street or a whole side street, that isn't part of the plan.
Okay.
So maybe I'm not...
For the, well, I'm curious as to the lot there, that are we purchasing that lot or a portion of the lot that's, the new side street would be going over or how, you know, we're doing that?
You need a driveway access?
Yes.
Okay, there is one lot specifically that we have to approach a landlord yet and visit with them about how we might acquire an easement or a portion of that lot. Those discussions have not actually taken place yet with landlords, in fact, there's a total of four.
Oh, okay.
But that will take place pretty soon.
Gotcha. Are we also purchasing to, are we planning on enlarging that road in the future, any? Shown?
Yeah, as part of the roadway improvement project.
No, I think the intent has been to try to keep that roadway to about three lanes.
Gotcha.
And that goes in line with, you know, sort of modern ways of looking at these bigger streets is that, you know, three lanes will be sufficient for it. It does call to have some, oh, like bike lanes, the walking path side, sidewalk is part of those things too, so the roadway is gonna be pretty, as it is.
So the drainage issues we're having are all gonna be included in this?
Absolutely, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. That's all my questions and thank you gentlemen.
Sir?
Do you have anything else?
Oh, nothing? No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number four, lift station number three replacement.
Again, Frank Abart, Public Works Director. This is a project that wasn't exactly planned this year's budget and we're gonna request to reallocate $120,000, that was to replace a truck and we'd like to reallocate that money to essentially replace this lift station. We've got several structural issues with this lift station and I guess, long story short, it's served more than its life cycle and I should've brought pictures of being through this, right? All around, it's a circular housing and all around for like a one-foot radius inside that housing is significant deterioration inside. Now, everything sits on a platform and all of this rust and deterioration around the outside is eventually gonna cause this thing to collapse on top of itself. And I, in discussions with the people who maintain that, they've indicated they're, we're very worried about getting in there to provide maintenance activities because the floor of this thing deflects when they get in it.
Wow.
And so they never go there alone anymore, which is good. But it is, it is in shape, it really needs to be replaced. This is a contract, I'm requesting approval with Smith &amp; Lovelace for $78,818 and a contract with Hickman Environmental Services in the amount of $15,000. And I'm also offering, requesting authorization to hold the remaining $26,182 in reserve until we can determine what is the best way to repair the failing retaining wall that's also running along the side of this particular installation. The sole supplier is currently, it's Smith &amp; Lovelace Equipment. It will be far more efficient for them to design the replacement so that you can take the old out, put the new in right away. Takes about six months to order this stuff and they custom build it and they'll deliver it to the site. They don't, however, install it. You'd have to hire one of their authorized installers, which is in this case Hickman Environmental Services, so that you meet all of the installation requirements and you achieve all of their warranty requirements, so. I'll answer any questions. That is a really short view summary.
Very good.
Of the issue and unfortunately, the next item's even worse.
Yep. Thank you very much. Nothing else from the staff? Anything from the citizens? None, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve contracts with Smith &amp; Lovelace in the amount of $78,818 for a lift station and Hickman Environmental Services LLC in the amount of $15,000 for installation and author our staff to spend up to $26,182 to replace a retaining wall.
Second. Moved and seconded. Let's turn to start down here, sir.
I'm curious on the dump truck, why were we getting by a $120,000 dump truck?
It was adorable.
It was 91.
Four-wheel drive, slammed.
Dump truck that we had planned to kind of look at, one of the things that we do, do is we take the sludge, byproduct of our waste garbage facility.
Oh, yeah.
And transport that, so the thought was that utilizing a larger truck would cut down on staff time expenses related to number of trips.
Okay.
So, in review of that, it has been determined that this is a far better use of that fund.
Gotcha, okay, that's pretty clear, thank you, sir.
That's actually what I was interested in, what are we gonna do without the sludge truck, you know?
Two questions. Give me the 30-second re-education on what the lift station's purpose is, what does it do?
Generally, what a sanitary sewer lift station is, it's the low point where sewage comes to this place and it fills up in this pit. This pit, once it reaches a certain level, pumps will kick in and it will pump it into a force main up the hill to the next lowest drop point, so it'll go grab it.
Okay.
And in fact, your house drains to this.
That's what I was kinda curious. So will this then be impacted by that 138th Street redesign when we get to that point? Are we gonna have to move it?
No, no. Good question.
Thank you.
Well, that's what I was curious too, because this will fit in, it's not like we're putting money out there right now that's gonna get potentially wasted in a couple of years. And what about the retaining wall itself? Will the road go into that section, so will the retaining wall then end up really being torn out again?
No.
No, please.
The complication with the retaining wall is that we're going right into the baseball season and of course, those of you who know what retaining wall I'm talking about, it's right there at the bleachers and stuff and we'll do what we can to secure the area. But the complication is, we don't wanna install something there and then have the guy who's gonna be installing the lift station have to tear that all out. This thing's, you know, 20, 25 feet in the ground and so there's gonna be quite an excavation to get the old out and the new in. So, we haven't found the solution yet for the retaining wall. When I do, I'll very likely be back to talk to you about that again, but at this point, we're real careful about warmer than install because we don't have, we don't wanna tear it out in six months when the pump gets here, so.
Gotcha.
We don't have a solution, an answer just yet to that.
Okay, and I guess if you have to tear that out, you're gonna end up doing damage anyway to a point where you're gonna have to correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And you're doing the entire concrete housing and everything? Because it says specifically excluded items, I just didn't know if that...
The well down below, we don't have to remove, it appears to be in good enough shape, but the housing goes below the ground and sits upon that concrete well. So the housing is metal, what's left of it, and that's what's gotta be pulled and removed. And the pump systems itself go down into the pit, those will be replaced as well.
Nothing else? Very good. Nothing else? No other questions? No other questions? Vote, please.
Kim?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gerli?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to the next one, so famously introduced, the replacement of a sanitary sewer manhole. Sir?
Frank Abarth. This particular item was discovered actually towards the end of January, shortly after I came on board, and it's a manhole located, frankly, Wagner, Wagner Cars, Vehicles, if you know where I'm talking about. You'll see some states and some preliminary things on the ground out there. Essentially, it's a, it's a large hole that has deteriorated down below into that manhole. And we thought we would, when I first learned about it, we talked about it with staff and Laura, and we thought maybe we had an idea. She had a good idea for a solution, and we tried to pursue the solution. However, when she went down into the hole to try to make those repairs, we discovered that the concrete is so deteriorated that she pretty much wanted out of there right away. It was not going to be able to support the kind of solution we thought we had because there's literally no concrete integrity left in that particular manhole. This is a very important manhole. There's two manholes over there, and as a result, we looked at the other manhole, which is having a very big problem with deterioration as well, but we think we have a little more time on that one to come up with a solution. This one's going to require a complete removal and replacement. The design that we've come up with to replace this, I'm going to just describe what I believe is the biggest problem with this. You have a manhole, you have a force main with 90, 95% of the city's sewage, comes through this manhole, comes in a force main. Unfortunately, when it was initially designed, it was designed so that the water, sanitary sewer, coming out of this force main into the manhole, it splashes, it just goes across, hits the other side of the manhole, and then drops three to four feet at least. This causes all kinds of toxic issues. It exacerbates a problem with deterioration on concrete. So, what we have done is, the new design is going to have this force main coming in at the bottom so that it's a direct shot from right across. It's not, it's not splashing or anything. It ought to come right across, go right into the gravity main where it will continue on to the wastewater treatment plant without the disturbance, let's call it. That's what I think the problem is, and that's what I am hoping that we're going to correct. Anyway, we have contacted a local contractor, been in discussions with them. I'm not sure, I allude to it here, I do consider this an emergency, and the reason that I do consider it that is because of the integrity of that manhole. If that manhole collapses, there's nowhere to go with this sewer. It's going to be running down Front Street. And I'm not saying this is scare anybody. It's just, it is. I mean, it's got nowhere to go. If that collapses...
Anything else?
I guess I'm just going to say we have a problem, but I guess I have a problem. Anyway, I'm requesting your approval, the contract with Sheets Construction in the amount of $51,250 to replace sanitary sewer manhole number D209, and I would entertain any questions you may have about this issue.
Very good, thank you. Anything else from the staff? Anything from the citizens other than wanting sanitary sewer? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion authorizing staff to sign an agreement with Sheets, is it pronounced?
Sheets.
Sheets Construction in an amount not to exceed $51,520 to replace sanitary sewer...
$2,250.
I'm sorry.
$250. That's $5,200.
Which one are you guys reading?
Yep, which one?
We have it on.
You've got two different numbers, Chris.
This is $250, that's $5,200.
Which one is it, Chris?
No, I said 52, okay.
Yeah, they changed.
My apologies. Ah, okay. Which one do you use in the sheets? Are we looking for 520, 51, 520?
51, 250.
Go ahead, go with 51. Okay, so 51, 250 to replace sanitary sewer manhole number D209, in an agreement with
Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated to provide inspection and construction services for an amount of $7,400.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, concerns, comments, or moved in second, questions, concerns, and we'll start down.
Is there any problem with the integrity of the street above that? How much of that's going to have to be replaced?
Well, no, shouldn't replace any. None of this should actually take place on the street, shouldn't disturb the traffic at all. Manhole's actually on the north side of the street, so we should be able to excavate, and although it's a deep excavation, we should be able to have shoring inside there to protect workmen and things like that. Get the job done.
Quite a few utilities down there, too?
We don't believe that we're going to have an interference with those.
Oh, good, good. Sorry, go ahead.
Makes sense, tonight is the night of pawns, considering the gravity of the situation.
Oh, fired. Fired.
Out of here. Will they be able to get to, to the project pretty quick, then?
I'm hoping that we'll be signing agreements first thing in the morning if that's happening.
I mean, you make it sound a little dire, and I'm not like...
It does, yeah.
I don't want to talk to residents who are not having...
Well, they can still flush. It's just where it's going to end up.
We might need that dump truck, right?
More than that.
So, once they do start, what's the time to completion?
We think about five to six days.
Oh, good, okay.
So, it ought to be pretty fast.
Understanding that this has a design flaw, what's the average life of a manhole?
Oh, gosh, depends on where it is and the toxicity of what it's processing, but...
Skipping over it then.
20, 25 years is a pretty good time.
Because this one...
That stuff can be really toxic if it's not treated correctly or it gets hung up. You want it to move as fast through a manhole as possible. You don't want it to linger and get splashed around.
Right, right.
So, enough detail.
So, that the total out of service will be about five to seven days? You have a plan for that?
Actually, we've developed a plan to bypass. We've actually tested the plan, so it works.
That's good.
So, part of the reason that, you know, it's taken so long to get to this point.
And the same with the other lift station? Total time, downtime on that lift station change?
Gosh, I'm hoping that's like 24 hours or less.
And you have a plan for that?
Right, yes.
Okay. Very good. Ma'am?
No, people ask all the questions and...
Since we're doing the deep excavation and doing, I mean, as intensive as this is, could we add the second manhole and save money?
I don't think so. At this point, we don't actually have a plan on how we're going to do the second manhole yet for first, because we don't have a bypass figured out for that one yet. Actually, we were thinking we'd get a boat, but we can't. We haven't figured it out. Right now, we're going to bypass over to that...
To the one that, the other one that has a problem?
Yes.
Okay.
That one hasn't deteriorated to the level that it's what I'd call a crisis yet. We got a little time to figure that problem out, so we're going to have a little time to figure that one out, I think.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Sir? No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Gerli?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your attention to detail and your professionalism coming into this situation new and using your years of experience to evaluate situations that may have been standard operating procedure in, before this. So, I appreciate that, the seriousness, aesthetic gravity of the situation.
Try not to be as horrific, though, next time.
Well...
It is what it is. On to, on to item number six, the 2019 water and wastewater rates and fees.
Tilly, the finance director, this kind of segues from the last two items. This is requesting a 4% increase in water and wastewater service fees and usage rates effective with the April bills. This was, this increase was incorporated into the 2019 budget and discussed with council during the budget. We had a study done a couple of years ago where we looked at our capital needs, and we implemented changes at that time, and it was recommended to do increases each year to keep up with our increasing costs. And this will increase both the rates and the service fees as well as the impact fees on all size meters. Do you have any questions?
Very good, thank you. Nothing else from the staff? Anything for, against from the citizens? Yes, please.
How's that compared to the surrounding communities as far as the increase?
The increases compared to other communities' increases?
Just around the community.
I'm not sure what all the other communities' increases are, but this 4% equates to about a $3.53 increase on the average bill per month. And I know that our average bill is less than our average comparable utilities in this area.
Yeah, when we did the rate study a couple of years ago, 2016, I think, I think that we were around half the total bill of comparable cities in terms of what we're charging for water and wastewater compared to what they are, so we're lower.
We're 50% less.
Yeah.
Yeah, compared to water one.
Hence the plan of a gradual increase to help, yeah.
So, we've increased...
Yeah, because we put a pretty heavy increase in right after that.
Part of that push was to get us in line, and these are, as opposed to taking off a big chunk and, you know, forcing the issue, so to speak, the recommend...
Incremental change.
All around was to go through and update these at a 4% increase. I would also probably could find to say this is, this plays into our master planning efforts that we're doing on the water and wastewater side, is to start to figure out what our operational costs are, so we know what that is, but the bigger part of that is what our capital issues are. So, we will come back probably next year and look at what, have another study done on our rates based on what is approved as far as how quickly we're going to start to tackle some of the capital improvement delay projects that we have.
Good, thank you. Seeing nothing else, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a 4% increase in water and wastewater service fees and fees and usage rates effective April 1st, 2019.
Second. Moved in second. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
I guess I'm speaking again. On foreclosures and properties that go in arrears and things along those lines, are we already forcing a main replacement? Or not a main, a, like the valves and stuff, are we getting those replaced? Do you know by chance?
We do the meter. So, we'll do, the meter has been off for six months.
If it's been off for six...
Yeah, the utility shut-off thing? Yeah.
And it needs a setter upgrade, then the new resident pays for that upgrade. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I believe so.
So, we don't do anything with like the laterals, the sanitary laterals that come up from the house up to the main? We don't, we don't do anything to that. When we do do the setup, though, we make sure that we're not going to get, if we need main thing, what you get is the meter. Obviously, what we're trying to figure out is accurate mileage, so...
Yeah. Is there any way to do that as a city? I mean, with the, the reason I'm asking is, I know I've purchased a couple of properties that had, well, like, I believe, original meters in them, and I know that there's been a lot of flippers recently that have went through, I think, probably 30, 40 houses within Bonner. Is there any way that we can make an ordinance so that those are replaced rather than perpetual? And the reason I ask is because I've had an issue with two or three of them. I had a house flooded because somebody broke in or picked up the meter pit and was able to turn it on because it was from the 1920s, and all they had to do was turn the thing with a screwdriver.
Yeah, I mean, we have an ordinance that says it's illegal to tamper with the meter and you're fined.
Kim?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gerli?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations. Not a lot of discussion on that, but in the bigger scheme, that will be vitally important. Moving on to our final item, number 10, cereal malt beverage ordinance. Staff?
The state approved as of April 1st, cereal malt beverage sales up to 6%, including 6%. So, this ordinance would amend our code of ordinances to match that and to match our process for issuing cereal malt beverage licenses.
Very good. Nothing, no other comments? Very good. Anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve an ordinance to amend Chapter 3 Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bonners Springs, Kansas.
Second. Moved in second. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
Mayor?
No.
I can't believe that the longest single issue in tonight's pages was prohibited conduct on, wow. I have a really pretty simple life. Yes, no, that's all I just...
Nothing.
Nothing. Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Wood? Yes. Shannon?
Yes.
Those are things you can't do.
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gerli?
Yes.
Mackey?
Abstain if I'm able to.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to our reports, so the first being the city manager's report.
Where do I begin? Really quickly, I just want to point out, these are available, Lawrence Springs Farmer's Market, these are available at City Hall, and I think they have them at the library as well, basically yard signs. Anybody pick up and put up in their yard? And as a reminder, the first farmer's market is May 4th is the kickoff. So, also wanted to follow up. We had a conversation the other week about nuisances generally in enforcement. I did just want to report that we did have myself, the city planner, enforcement officer member at IBPS who does do our building inspections and plan review. They also provide the service of going through and actually doing what's called a sweep of the community and ensuring compliance with building codes through that. So, we are in the process of putting together, getting a proposal from them to essentially go through and go through the entirety of the community and follow up on code enforcement issues, name link buildings. We'll probably also look at that point in time to look at addresses, to make sure that addresses are properly put on houses and sent to fire and police. Usually, you can tell where fires at, police, it's a little bit harder if you don't have the address on the house. And again, that's, that's...
Wet on rig.
Will hopefully be coming back to us here shortly. We will do a lot of information leading up to that, too, just as far as people are aware of it, so they can take any steps they may need to do to ensure they're aware of it. So, again, just wanted to follow up on that. And then, lastly, have been working with Unified Government. They reached out to us and the City of Edwardsville about being part of what they call Adopt a Spot. Really quickly, it's essentially the same thing as Adopt a Highway or a similar type of endeavor. They are pushing that through their SOWR program.
Go push.
But again, an opportunity to, community groups or whomever to go and actually adopt a location, they'll get a sign, some notoriety that way, and obviously, the city benefits from having a cleaned up space. So I would just ask if there is anybody that's wanting to participate in that or if they have any locations in mind, let me know so I can get that information to the Unified Government. Again, they're the ones that are providing the program, however, they've asked us to give an inventory of any locations that might be, be used in TLC, so. Again, that.
138.
Please my report.
Very good. Just to clarify on that, their Adopt a Spot program, what's that? We've had adopt a area programs before in Bonner Springs, and I think they were probably just Bonner Springs saying, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'd love for you to clean this place up.
Right.
A couple of times here. So is it two or three and special trash bags or?
Basically, it's just an ongoing, as frequent I think.
The group wants.
Somebody wants to do it. Again, what kind of happens is that Unified Government facilitates that. They do have some protocol, they are kind of pushing this through their lineage committees that they have on this thing. So they are kind of figuring out some of the finer details, but at the end of the day, what happens is the Unified Government has a side shot through the public works department, print office sign, it'll say something to the effect of this spot is being maintained by whoever, and they will have, again, a little thing that says Juana's Club, that's an example.
So then would we support those efforts through, like, the first spot that came to our minds was 138th Street? Would we support that through, like, some traffic control, litter crew signs, things like that?
Well, see, it doesn't really get into roadways.
Okay.
So this is something that's born on the program, which is more spots, sort of things, vacant lots or park areas or something like that, not necessarily a highway.
Okay.
So we do do highway cleanups, or we have in the past. K-7 is one that we try to facilitate, and usually that's handled through Bonner Beautiful.
The city cleanup, yeah. And that's once a year.
Correct.
And I know there's been groups that have done spots, but they were alongside roads, but, and the city is pretty much responsible for all of our city space, but, yeah, I'll have to get my head around how we can help with vacant spots that we're currently trying to remediate through our nuisance ordinance program. So that's a, that's something. All right. Nothing else, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start with city council items, and I believe it's time to start down here.
Yeah, I may have to read a little bit of this because I thought it was so very, very important, and I'll tell you why. Councilman Stevens and I attended police training simulators that we have now, and we thought it was a presentation and, last Friday, and we were surprised. We actually were the subjects doing the actual simulation, using pistols, assault rifles, and tasers. The simulator, as best as I can explain it, is if you're sitting, if you're, you're sitting here at a desk as a training officer and you have a computer, and in front of you there's a big, what would you say, Tom, was about 10, 10 feet high and about 15 feet wide?
Probably somewhere in those big.
Big, a big huge screen, and you're sitting there with the police equipment on, the pistol or the tasers and stuff, and on this screen, they project an actual incident where you're walking up into a garage or you're approaching a car, and it's all, it's all done in actual, there are actors acting it out, but they come at you with a gun, with a knife, whatever, and you have just that split second as to how to deal with what you're having to deal with. They also provide this with the actual body cams that our police officers have, they can take if we're out in the field and something happens, they can take that recording and actually run that simulation through a training process, which is now. I know we've seen cops and, you know, live, live PD, but this is nothing like it because when we see stuff on TV, you're actually behind the camera that is actually filming the situation. But we were the actual officers involved in the actual training, having to make split section, second life and decision, death decisions, and being faced with every possible situation, dealing with unknown on every call while trying to protect and serve. We then observed, fortunately, actual officers doing the training. And again, you've all got to go through it because you will develop a tremendous respect, and it puts you in a life and death situation, which these guys and gals face every single day. And if, when you want to do it, they're welcome to, welcoming to put you through it and you contact the chief. I did want to read this too, and says, because of all of your voting for the simulator, you, Sean, chief, and everyone unnamed, have created opportunities that can save our officers' lives as well as prepare them for almost every situation in today's world. And I do want to draw, tonight on TV, on the news, a Lawrence police officer used their weapon on an individual on a traffic stop and actually grabbed the weapon rather than the taser. So these situations, every single call that these, our officers are going through, what Tom and I experienced, I tried to explain it to my wife and she didn't want to hear it. I'm serious, because it literally, knowing that you're in a room in a controlled environment, but putting yourself thinking that every time you go out, every call you go out, you have absolutely no idea what's going to happen. And as I said, please, please go through it because you'll notice. And one other thing, real quickly, I heard that I believe Osage, Missouri is being investigated regarding the Sunshine Law. So, other than that, that's it.
Very good, well, thank you. Sir?
I was going to ask a question about the Wind River, or what's the new development going up?
Windbridge.
Windbridge. Do you know, do they have an algorithm for how they're determining rates or whatever?
Yeah, it's a load of mod, I have a racial view.
I dug into it just because I was curious, and from what I recall, I was able to figure out through the property owner.
Hmm.
I can't give you any numbers, but I dug back and was able to actually find a chart that had been used over the past, I'll say 12 to 18 months. I can't give you the numbers, but if you want me to try and dig back again.
If we could request they raise, they're going to nuke the hell out of our market. I mean, they're going to kill Bonner Real Estate. I just saw their listing, and they're listing it 60 cents a square foot, and to put that in perspective, new units on the market, a three-bedroom, two-bath is essentially at minimum 110 per square foot. So they're listing a three-bedroom, two-bath unit for $750, and I understand it's supposed to be affordable, but we have six, seven different complexes and owners that I've talked to right now that have units listed that are, I mean, near that, and they're going to just nuke the, like, the algorithms for rates for our market and for, like, the determining factors for Wyandotte County, like how we do affordable, what's not affordable. All of their rates are going to, I mean.
I mean, you have to, you have to qualify in order to be able to get an affordable rate, so.
That's not how they're listing it. They haven't listed as their units are straight up 750 and then.
Well, I'm sure they are 750, but you have to fall into the parameters, usually, I'll double check, I'll be having to.
Okay, yeah.
But typically, you can't make too much money, but you have to make at least a certain amount, and it's for, you know, it's usually based upon occupancy and then the size, and it's, low to moderate is a number that's determined based upon the census data, you know that stuff.
Yeah, and I'm not being disrespectful, our, with our metrics, that's, it's not really that low. Like, you could make 30, I don't believe so. I looked at some of them.
I just did this the other day, trying to get some CDVG money, and I was actually a little surprised at the percentage of population in the city limits of Bonner Springs that fall into low to moderate income. And where the actual apartments are, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I would say that the need for affordable housing, you know, nationwide, there, I just read something, there's not a state nor a city in the state in the United States that has met the requirements for affordable housing based upon standardized numbers. The algorithms you're asking for that I found were just for that particular company at some other locations they had, not for Windbridge. I don't believe, if you don't hear from me.
Yeah, and it was my recollection that a portion of those, their apartments were going to be low to moderate, and then the rest of those apartments were going to be market rate, or at least rented at market rate. So I would, I don't know, but you could certainly investigate that. Yes, I'm sure they're advertising the entry for the lowest. But I believe there's only a portion of them that will be eligible for low to moderate, not subsidized, but having to meet requirements to be eligible for those rents. And then the, there's, there is a market rate portion also, percentage.
Could we get some of those numbers just so that, because I've got a lot of really piss-off people that we voted for.
I will certainly try.
Okay.
It's, you know.
At least so I have something I can convey to, sorry, guys, this is the parameters, this is what happens if you want to start building income-based units, then go for it, but.
Some of that was back in the original applications in there.
Original memo in our city council packet had all that.
So they would have had.
It had a little bit of it, though.
Yeah, they would have had some major requirements of low income housing tax credit.
Program.
Yeah, so that's, they would have, any of their prices, like the mayor said, are based off of 2.1 and things like that.
Yeah.
So one of the issues that we have is that it's very expensive.
Okay.
You don't try to make force that issue on folks, I think they're five hundred bucks a month, something around there.
Same neighborhood.
You know?
Yeah. But the new ones do lock.
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking, I know that they originally did not lock, and the new ones do.
So that's why we try to do it on that type of location, if you want to call it that, is that if they've been off for a while, we're assuming at that point that, again, it's probably an old heater, that's our stance in terms of getting in and swapping out heaters before they can actually put out the back doors and swap that out.
Okay, then we change those out. Okay. Second question was on the 4%. We had talked at some point during one of our workshops about paying part of the, what is it, City Hall, with water increases or something thereof, is that still viable or is it, is this part of that?
No, it's not part of that, I think. That's still kind of a conversation that we're batting around a little bit is, we do have the ability to request that utilities transfers money to that.
Yeah.
Or to the general fund. We did do that last year, we started doing that was, did that on a 5% rate on both of those, so we're getting 5% on water, 5% on the wastewater that's going directly to the general fund.
General fund.
So that will be something that we probably hit on as the budget season comes for the next month.
Yeah.
Is to talk about that and use of those types of funds appropriately for anything in the City Hall definitely.
Okay, thanks, sir. It's all mine.
Yep. Can I add something?
Hey, Sean, on the water wastewater master plan, is there a discussion in there to kind of compare, since we do provide those services, should we be in that business? Are we the most effective in that business? You know, do we provide great water, but do we provide great water at a valuable, you know, or a good value, I guess?
I would say on the wastewater side, that comparison's a little bit trickier just because the city, we have, I would say, a fantastic wastewater treatment facility for the size of the city that we have, it's about three times bigger than what we need as far as the current population. So fact of the matter is, I think we're pretty well invested in that, so we didn't necessarily look at going anywhere else with that flow. We do have a connection with Johnson County Fountain, Johnson Forest, that will be getting that flow, but on the wastewater side, the water side, we did look at two different options, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these. And this was just presented to Planning Commission last, was that Tuesday? We presented this to Planning Commission too, so this will be forthcoming to you all probably the next couple of weeks. Water, we looked at, basically the big thing that we got out of that from the citizens and the input that we received is that everybody wants softened water.
Yes.
So we kind of knew that going into it, so that was kind of how we based some of our issues. I will quickly caveat and say that the issues with the wastewater side that we talked about tonight are not unique to the wastewater side. We've got some significant capital improvements that have to be made at the water facility, so that needs to get done, period, if we're going to stay in the business. The other part of that is to look at a softening facility, so there's that portion of the two, and how much that costs. And then we looked at two other options, one of which was to have BPU provide the water. They do provide some amount of water right now, so we have that cost. And then the other option is, and this gets to the softened water, is to have Johnson County, or rather, Water One, provide the water.
Because they just ran that giant pipe right by us, right?
We have an interconnect, so there is some potential to do that. I will tell you that the lowest cost option off of that was for the city to continue to provide its own water. You know, and it's, it's marginal, and so we're talking about dollars and things like that, but again, you guys, when we presented all that information, that have kind of informed conversation about this in more in depth than what I'm talking about right now, and ultimately we'll look for direction from you all as to what route we kind of want to go down with that. So again, water, yes, we have comparisons, wastewater, no, period.
Thank you. Again? We're good, nothing else, no other questions, concerns, comments, vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number seven, international building code ordinance.
Good evening, Rachel Klein, city planner. This is a request to amend the ordinance 2405. Currently, the building permits are issued for one year for residential and two-year for commercial. The ordinance change would reduce that to 180 days or six months for each of them. Steph came to this conclusion partly because of the chance that the building codes could change within two-month, excuse me, a two-year period, especially with commercial, and I believe this is, can you help me out here, Sean? I'm not sure if we adopted it, amended it, and now we're going back to the 2015?
So what we did was we adopted, we adopted and amended the, these books are up this thick in mind, so we adopt all of these, and then typically what's done is you'll amend certain sections up. So we made the change to go to a 12-month and then a 24-month cycle, so this is just reverting to what was originally recommended in IBC. I'm not sure if that makes it any muddier or not, but.
Good. Nothing else? Anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2405.
Second.
Moved in second, and I think it's time to start down here, sir.
I just want to clarify that that 180 days we're going back to would be for both commercial and residential, both.
Correct.
Nothing?
Are we currently on 2015? And the reason I ask is because Wyandotte County's 2012. Are we totally separate from them?
We're totally separate from them.
So Mark, the organization runs on 2015 as well, then?
IBTS? Or Mark, the, oh.
The Mark Organization or Cities.
I don't know actually what they adopted.
Yeah, so all the IBC or any of these international codes are adopted by the local jurisdictions, so it's completely different depending on if you're in Edwardsville or.
Okay, yeah, I remember him saying that to me one time.
Yeah, I think Lenexa as an example is, gosh, they were on like late 90s, I believe, still, so they were just updating. They come up with these new versions about every three to five years, and so there is a 2017, I believe, is the newest, and that includes a lot of environmental code conversations.
Yeah, that's why I was worried about and asking.
It gets into, yeah, for contractors or for builders, it gets very expensive, and you top these things.
Yeah.
So there's always a little bit of trepidation for cities to change, so again, it's a local decision that hinges on whether or not you're on 15 or 12 or 08.
Okay. One other, I guess, is this all of the building codes? Meaning, like, all of the trades?
Permits.
Well, are we on 2015 for all of the trades?
Yes, except for IBC, the National Electric Code is always a year behind just 2014, but it's, that's standard across the board.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I have some more questions, sir.
Nothing else? Vote please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes. I know.
Glad to have you on the team.
I don't get to vote very often, but when I do, it really matters.
Really matters.
We'll go on to item number eight, which is a special use permit for 13020 Kansas Avenue. I think some people have been waiting for this. Steph?
Wake up.
This one will cost you no money and it's kind of a neat thing, so, um, we have a request for a special use permit for auto sales located at 13020 Kansas Avenue. Some of you may be familiar with the address, it's Casey Liquor. For those of you not familiar with it, that's Casey Liquor. Of course, that is one store inside of a strip and within this store, the owners are allowing the applicant to, uh, use office space for the business. What this business is, it's very neat, um, the basic thing is, if you recall with Fuel House, uh, last month, they were requesting auto sales and service in order to obtain a dealer's license with, and theirs was, you know, the exotic rentals and such. The applicant in this case, uh, Mr. Victor Choi, who's out here if we need him, uh, he has in Korea for the past 10 years been doing and pretty much online computer and phone only auto sales business. And he has recently, uh, come to the United States and is prepared to do this online computer and phone only auto sales. Uh, no cars come to him, no cars come to the parking lot. He has made arrangements with a specialized like luxury vehicle, Lamborghini.
Yeah, the layers.
Yeah, that's the plan, is to have any inventory that does come would stay at the repair shop, which is not part of this. So in order to get the dealer's license, Mr. Choi has to have a land use that's appropriate. So again, no inventory, but from what he says and the 10 years experience behind him, uh, the planning commission was, was pretty excited about this. They did vote unanimously to approve it with conditions that are listed in the memo, which are pretty standard, uh, in the ordinance. The only exception being that there would be no displayed inventory allowed on the premises, parking lot adjacent, really anywhere. Inventory won't ever be here unless somebody from Bonner Springs buys a vehicle and then drives it around, so. Um, if you have any questions beyond what I've stated, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer those. Mr. Choi is here, if you have questions for him.
Very good, nothing else? Anything to add specifically?
Uh, not to say, I guess.
Very good, nothing else? Very good, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance, uh, a special use permit for, and help me with your first name.
John Wan.
John, John Wan, Victor Choi, under SUP-142 to allow auto sales on property zone C2, general business district located at 13020 Kansas Avenue.
Moved and seconded. Uh, can we have questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
That's great. We really do, so.
Welcome to Bonner, mate.
Yeah, exactly, welcome.
Was there any discussion of signage, exterior signage?
It, it did not come up, um, I, did you have intent to have any signs at the location in this, that would be visible from the outside of the building?
Yeah, the Kansas, uh, Kansas DAB, uh, they said the cardiova license required a physical sign.
It has to be displayed, but no, nothing for the, in an international?
Oh, it is going to be at an international, the sign with a logo.
Is that on your, in your office? Displayed in your office?
That's, that's, it has to be outside of the, you can't see the visual from the mainstream, so.
Like on the window?
Yeah, could be a window.
So as long as that conforms to any signage requirements, it fits within the special use permit? Okay, thank you.
No questions?
Nothing here.
Nothing else? Sounds exciting, um, hopefully you'll be driving one of the Lamborghinis to work every day and park, park it right out front there, that would be great.
Not if it's for sale, Kip.
No, he's got to drive something, he, it could be his, drive his car.
No exception there.
I, I hopefully don't have to drive my work car all the time, so.
That's almost funny.
Vote please.
Almost agree.
You just killed it, mayor.
Stevens?
I'm sorry?
Stevens?
Yes.
Matthew? Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes, sorry for calling.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip? Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, congratulations. And, um, we were certainly not laughing at, at your expense, we're glad that.
Laughing at our puns.
Hey Victor, he is the funeral director, that's the car that he would have to drive, so that's a weird laugh.
Yeah. All right, we're on to item number nine, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign for the purchase of 214 Maple. Steph?
Um, has a quick reminder, on February 11th of this year, the city council authorized the acquisition of real estate located at 214 Maple. The title company has requested a resolution to that effect, um, basically approving, uh, the authorization to Andrew's sign and to file the documents, um, to complete the sale. So again, looking for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and the city clerk to attest the purchase of real estate by the city of Bonner Springs. Happy to answer your questions.
Pretty good, nothing else? Anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution to authorize the city manager to sign and city clerk to attest the purchase of real estate by the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas.
Say again.
Moved and seconded, we'll start down here with any questions, concerns, comments? Sir?
Nothing to the show here.
Nothing.
Nope. Seeing nothing, vote please.
Yes, they have some market rate, uh, units, but they also have to qualify for a lot of money that they receive for the infrastructure that was required up there to make that work. They had to have a certain amount of those because they need, I mean, the parameters and, and just like our public housing authority, they adjust, um, their rents based on declared income, so, um, but Rachel, um, is obviously going to take a look and see what, um, what we can find as far as where they state.
Okay, and I appreciate it, because there's a couple of banks that are asking about it too, that basically if those flood too much, they're not wanting to fund anything for the next three to four years until those are out of the market. So that's like my worry.
They're wanting to have tax credits coming.
What's that?
I said, definitely out of the market, they have tax credits.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's the other portion is that, it's like some of the people that I've been talking to, we did several tax credits and stuff like that, and I know in 2020, that's going to be expiring, right?
It's based off the timeframe, so I think it's 10, 20 years they have to maintain that.
No, sorry, sorry, our program right now, that we currently have.
RRP?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that, um.
25 year in 2020 is the last year of that would be starting.
Yeah, so we're looking to bring that back to you all.
Okay, we are going to be renewing that program?
We'll be reevaluating it.
Okay.
And as far as you guys have to, again, declare those areas.
Yeah.
And then we have to go to the other taxing jurisdictions and have them, we have to.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Do, are we still waiting on a time on the horse trough? Thank you.
I haven't got the number, or excuse me, the number, I'm going to walk back, eight time yet, but I was, I did get that in there. Um, I will follow up with them and see if they have it, I'm certain.
I, I saw something, but I don't remember.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know where, the library may have some information.
I saw something, I didn't have time on it, so, thank you.
Hey Sean, what, did we start taking the developments back out of the packet? I didn't see them in there. Is that something that's gone by the wayside or is that coming back?
Kind of typical, um, one, we don't have a lot that are in that pipeline like we did, um, and that was a shift with planners changing too, so that was something that, that was, say, DOMS tracking chief, quote unquote, um, so we haven't necessarily figured that out. But again, there's, there's not a lot, I would say, that has been going on necessarily.
My permits?
Well, as far as cap, maybe the projects that are coming through for approval, so.
And how about our major project involving this place? When's that?
Here, City Hall, um, the, uh.
Here, yeah.
Omni boat, this building?
Um, I did find actually in the 1974 comprehensive plan, the comment that the current city hall is too small and needs to be looked at.
Ooh, historical record.
10 years after it was constructed, um, but anyway, uh, the bid had been pushed back, or rather the opening date had been pushed back, so it was going to be Friday. Um, there were a lot of requests because of spring break and a few other things that typically come in that, uh, we pushed it back. We'll have another opportunity for mainly subcontractors to come back in, I think we've had one, two, three or four. Yes, we have, we've had four walkthrough opportunities for folks to go through since we opened the bid up about a month ago, uh, but again, those will be open here on Friday afternoon. And then from there, it'll come back to you all, um, for approval of our contractors at that point in time, and then we have some financing things that we'll need to get sorted out. Uh, we also need to get somebody on board to handle the historical tax credits.
That'd be on you.
Something just hit the wall.
That's kind of good.
You've been a transformer.
New tires.
That 13,000 pounds just went kaboom.
19,000.
Oh, 19,000.
19,000.
More important, 130 grand.
I thought it was 90.
He said 90.
90.
Someone passing with 90.
Or an engine.
He got great.
I'm done.
Uh, real quickly, a follow-up with, uh, Mr. Kip, I would also, I, I appreciate it always getting that, kind of that, uh, that tracking document and planning, so, yeah, whatever you come up with, I would encourage also, at getting something on a regular basis. Also to, um, to add on to what, uh, Councilmember Shannon was talking about, um, several years ago, I went through the citizen academy and the difference between the old unit for simulation and this one was like a Ford Pinto and a Cadillac, I mean, there was a difference. The, there was two things that really, from the takeaway is the fact that whoever's operating the council at the time can actually select based upon the officer, what they're doing, how that scenario plays out. So one time to the next and the next, it could be one of four or five, six different, depending on whether that officer, how that officer's interacting. Secondly, they then can have, it completely records everything and they can immediately play it back and provide feedback to that officer, shows you if you did make, if you did take shots, where those shots actually landed. Were you on target? Did you hit something somewhere possibly? And that's what, I had one that was very high and like he says, you're liable for every one of, well, and that, it would have gone distance and, so you're liable for every one of those shots, so. It was, so I would encourage, just like as Councilman Shannon said, to, I would encourage everybody to reach out to the chief and make a time to go up and, and go through the exercise.
Pretty good.
I'm done.
Pretty good. Uh, as the mayor's report, I think everything's been hashed out.